Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and...
Welcome to the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. My name is Bob Pryor and the chair. Start off by introducing the other members to my far right. Laura Montagno, alternate member. Next to her, Kevin Baum. Next to her, Teresa Page. To my immediate left, S.R. Olson-Murphy. Laura Davies. And making his zoning board of adjustment debut this evening are our rookie, Mark Lemus. Welcome, Mark. Nice to have you here.
Thank you.
So there are five full-time members and two alternates. I would suggest that at some point, we let at least one of the alternates vote. I don't know if Mark, on his first meeting, feels comfortable doing that or not, but I think Laura would like to be a participating voting member on both of them.
Sure.
We'll figure that out when we get there. So if anybody would like to or needs to recuse themselves, let me know. So the first piece of business this evening is the application of Patrick Houghton for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.3, Schedule 2, to exceed the density requirements to permit four units on a 26,000-square-foot lot where a minimum lot size of 15,000-square-foot is required for each single-family dwelling and 24,000-square-foot is required for each duplex. The subject property is located at 46th Main Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. It's Tax Map Parcel 63-1. This is ZBA Case 24-1. Good evening.
Good evening. John Arnold from Orton Reno represent the applicant, Pat Houghton. Pat's sitting right behind me tonight.
Mr. Arnold, floor is yours.
Thank you. So I think most of you probably remember, we were here in November asking for three variances to redevelop 46th Main Street. It's Coachico Auto Repair. The board granted two of our variances. It granted a variance to allow multifamily use, and it granted a variance to allow a reduced front yard setback. Denied the third request, which sought to allow a density of five units. And the board encouraged us to come back with a project, a redesign, that was reduced in size and scale, fewer or smaller units, which we've been working on for the past couple of months and have come up with the plan that you have in your packets and I put up on the screen. As a threshold issue, I outlined in the application, before you get to the merits of our application, you have to determine whether there's been a material change since our last application, so you can consider the new application. And I'll briefly, I guess, touch on that as I give you an overview of the plan and highlight the differences since last time we were here. So the first, most notable change that I mentioned at the outset is that we've eliminated one of the units. It's now a four-unit development instead of a five-unit development. We've reduced the depth of the buildings. You can probably see it better in your packets, but on the, on the plan, the building depth has been reduced by 10 feet. It was 50 feet, now it is 40 feet. And that does a couple of things. One, it reduces kind of the scale of the buildings, number one, but two, there were some concerns expressed at the last hearing about adequate space in the rear of the property, both for snow storage and landscaping to screen the abutters to the rear. And so decreasing the depth of that building by 10 feet brought everything closer towards the front of the site. The shaded area on the plan is just being depicted as snow storage because there was that question last time as to where snow would be stored. But you can see that basically all the development, most of the impermeable surface is all well outside of that 25-foot rear setback and the side setbacks as well. So we see that as a benefit. Third, with the elimination of one of the units, we've also been able to eliminate one of the parking spaces. Parking count has gone down, so one of the parking spaces has been removed from the parking lot. Next, we flipped the orientation of the driveway on the property, took it to the other side, which we mentioned at the last hearing. This was largely in response to some comments and concerns about the proximity of that driveway to the adjacent apartment building and also the school. So that separates things out and should make a safer and easier access. And then, I guess finally, largely as a result of all these changes, we had an overall reduction in the size and scale of the project by reducing the building coverage. It's gone from 23% down to 18% on the lot. And we've increased open space from 52% to 55%. And the minimum open space for the zoning district is 40%, so we're well above that zoning requirement. So that's an overview of the changes. I think that there's a number of changes. I think they're dramatic. I think just, that's to tee up the threshold issue. I'm happy to pause here and have you ask questions about those changes, or I think it's probably appropriate to take a vote that they are material and that you can proceed to the merits of the application, but I'll defer to however you'd like to handle it, Mr. Chair.
Are there any questions from any members of the board, Mr. Arnold, at this stage?
I'll have a few questions, but at this stage, I don't, they can wait.
I'm not, I do not feel it's necessary to take a vote, do you?
I kind of looked into this ahead of time.
I know there is.
Surround them. I think best practice is to take a vote on whether there's been substantial change between the applications. So I'd be happy to make a motion to throw that forward. So I've moved to find that the present application of Patrick Houghton for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.3, Schedule 2, to exceed the density requirement to permit four units on an approximate 26,000-square-foot lot located at 46th Main Street in an R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, specifically ZBA Case 24-1, contains material changes in the proposed use of the land from the prior application submitted by the same applicant for a variance to exceed the density requirement to permit five units at the same location. Such prior application being denied by the board on November 21st, 2023, included in ZBA Case 23-17, and that the present application should be permitted to proceed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So we're going with the initial five or the five full-time permanent members?
Was, yes, on this case, yes.
Okay.
And chair votes aye as well?
Because I'm okay letting someone else vote if...
Let's continue with the five on this one. Okay, so you're all set to proceed, Mr. Arnold?
So I think what I'll do is...
Thank you for preparing that.
Yes, thank you. I'll let Pat speak just for a couple of minutes because he can provide some context as to how we wound up with this iteration of the plan compared to where we were in November. And then, once he does that, I'll come back and touch on the variance criteria.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Patrick Houghton. I'll try not to be redundant. John hit on most of the important items, but we are here for the second time. We did hear the board's concerns at the first meeting, as well as the neighbors. So we did go back and redesign the site. And one of the concerns with the board, they thought that there was just too much development on the site. So we reduced the footprint of the properties by 825 square feet. Reduced the length of the property, which brought it further away from the neighbors. We have not completely designed the, the buildings themselves, and we think they'll actually be, we sort of, we sort of designed it with a little bit of fudra on the width, and we think the actual product will be actually smaller than it shows here on the plan. Certainly, the neighbors' concern was the, the snow storage area. And by reducing the, the depth of the buildings, we think we have ample area for storage, and certainly will be willing to provide and work with the neighbors on any screening that may be needed when, when we build the product.
That was actually, if I don't mind me interrupting, that was a question that I had, because I see the snow storage is labeled within this vegetated area behind the parking spaces. And so I just was trying to get a sense of, you know, I actually don't fully recall how that's vegetated now and how snow is going to be plowed into that area, what the general idea, I know you're not, you'll go through planning board, so landscaping hasn't been fully thought out.
Right.
But I'm just trying to get a sense of how the snow will be stored and plowed into that, into that area, if it's also landscaped area.
I would imagine it will be a requirement to have that area landscaped, but, you know, where the pavement ends, there won't be any curb where the, where the pavement meets the, the grass area. So I think the snow can be, can be pushed right onto the landscaping area.
So it's just plow everything behind the park, the line parking spaces?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The seller has cooperated with us. He, he, we negotiated a price reduction on the property. The price is about as low as the seller can absorb at this point. So if we're not successful going forward, whether, whether it's our company or any other company, I don't think the economics work in, in developing anything on the site that's less than four units. So if, if we don't work something out with, with the seller, he'll continue to operate at that site. And I believe, you know, that site is a little bit out of place. It belongs down the road, and I think this, this development would be, would be great for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Why don't we hear from Mr. Arnold, then we'll have questions. You guys can decide who's going to answer at that time.
Thank you.
So at the last hearing, the board found that the variance application failed based on the public interest, the spirit of the ordinance, and the unnecessary hardship. So I'm going to focus primarily on those criteria. The application addresses all the criteria in more detail, but if you have any questions about anything else, I'm obviously happy to answer them. So on the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance, as you know, the test is whether the variance would alter the essential character of the locality or whether it would threaten public safety, health, or welfare. The character of the locality here, we spent a good amount of time speaking about it at the last hearing, so I'd rather not repeat everything that was said, but just reference back to it and try and refresh your memories. This neighborhood has a number of other multifamily uses that are already in it within a stone's throw of this property. There are single-family homes, there are multifamily homes. This is a commercial use, so it's a mixed neighborhood in that sense. The proposal that we have with four units on 26,000 square feet equates to 6,500 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. That density is significantly lower than the density of the other multifamily properties in the vicinity. And we identified the four, I think, nearest multifamily properties in our application. They're the same ones we spoke about last time. The, all four of them have significantly higher density than what we're proposing here. So I think the greatest density is at 64th Main Street. That has only 1,300 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. And then, up to the highest one, which is 41th Main Street, that has 3,900 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. So when we're proposing, you know, 6,500 square feet here, it's significantly more land area, significantly lower density than what's already existing in the other multifamily properties in the area. There was some talk at the last hearing about how the other multifamily properties in the area may be grandfathered, they may be in existing buildings, and therefore distinguishable. I'd argue that that's not a valid distinction for purposes of this criteria, because the criteria has to do with what the character of the neighborhood is and whether this is going to alter the character of the neighborhood. So whether those existing multifamilies are in older buildings, whether they've been there for a number of years, I think the point is that this neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood is one that includes high-density multifamily use. The other thing that I'd emphasize with respect to the public safety, health, and welfare is that we already have a barometer for this. The other multifamily neighbor, properties in the neighborhood have shown that they haven't posed any significant public safety, health, or welfare risks. If the increased density did pose those risks, we'd know about it by now. The nice thing about this development in terms of public safety, health, and welfare is that it's replacing a commercial use that's a non-conforming use. And specifically in terms of traffic, if you take that as a barometer, because I think people were concerned about, you know, traffic volume, particularly in this area near the school, the peak hour traffic counts for a four-unit development are about half or less than half of the traffic counts for the existing auto repair facility. So I think that'll be a dramatic improvement, even with the, the variance for the additional unit. On the unnecessary hardship, I'd reiterate that this is an unusually large property. This plan shows it, but let me just pull up the GIS. It gives you a better vantage point. So when you look at the GIS, you can see our property kind of stands out, aside from the school down here. All the surrounding properties on this side are significantly smaller. This is probably the closest property. It's still smaller by over a tenth of an acre than our property. But it, it's a unique property in the sense that it's very large. It's six tenths of an acre. It's more than double the size of most of the other properties around it. And it's irregularly shaped, which we pointed out last time. It's got that rear lot line that jogs around the adjacent property and creates an odd shape, along with the curve along the road frontage, limits the buildable area to some extent, but also just makes it an unusually shaped property. The other thing here is that the existing use is the auto repair facility, which is a non-conforming use. And I think Ms. Davies pointed out last time that that carries along with it some environmental implications. And the, I think all of these factors help to explain why this property is an existing non-conforming use in this neighborhood that hasn't been replaced with something yet. And all of these factors make it a property that's very challenging to redevelop, certainly for any permitted use, which is basically single-family use. But as Mr. Houghton said, even going up two units, three units, financially, because it's so large, because it has a going concern on it, that drives up the value of the property, makes it financially very difficult to put in a residential development that creates units that are marketable. Sure, you could spend the money on the property and build a single-family home or a duplex, but those units are going to be priced so exorbitantly that they're not going to be marketable, and they certainly won't be attainable for folks like me. The second part to the hardship criteria on the legal standard is looking whether, looking at whether there's a substantial relationship between the general purpose of the ordinance and its strict application of this property. And the purpose, I think, of the density limitation in the single-family zoning district is to try and preserve the single-family character of a single-family zoning district or a single-family neighborhood. And the neighborhood here, as I mentioned, is already peppered with multifamily properties, with densities that are higher than what we're proposing here. And so I'd argue to you that if you prohibit an increased density here, it really doesn't do anything to serve the public purpose of the ordinance, because it's not preserving any single-family nature or character of this neighborhood at that point. If this were a uniform, single-family neighborhood with, you know, purely single-family homes, with homes and developments that only met the, the density restrictions, then I think it would be a tougher case to make. But this neighborhood is already defined by density that exceeds what is allowed and already has a variety of different types of residential uses. And the density that we're proposing here is a lower density that's already prevalent throughout the neighborhood. So I don't believe it serves any public purpose to prohibit the four units on this property. You know, as you heard from Pat, this property is a challenging property. I think you know that from being in town. There have been prior development, redevelopment efforts that have come before this board and failed before Pat was even looking at the property. Overall, you know, I think there was optimism expressed by board members, certainly by us, at the last hearing about how we think this is a dramatic improvement for the property, will be a dramatic improvement for the neighborhood. And we're grateful that you're considering this new application and hope that you agree with our arguments.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Any questions for the applicant or for counsel? Baum, do you have some questions or Ms. Davies?
I just had a couple of questions to refresh my memory and make sure it's the same in the current proposal. So there will be garage under, two-car garage under each unit?
Yeah.
And what is the total height of the proposed structure? Do you know?
No, we don't have the final height yet.
Okay.
But the plan is to do it so it's compliant?
Sorry?
The plan is to do it so it's compliant.
Okay.
Which is 35.
So if you're doing garage under, then I think it's a pretty flat site, so you'll have to do some site work to excavate around the back, and then it will be like three stories in the back. Is that right?
With that, we know that's a concern.
Okay.
We, we do plan to have a, a very short, low ceiling in, in, in the garage compared to typical construction. The ceiling will probably be about seven feet, if that meets code. And we, we are, it's a relatively flat site, but we may be able to create a downward grade, very, very slight grade to get into the garage area, which will save us some more headroom. We have the same concern in marketing the property, that it doesn't turn into sort of a skyscraper-looking townhome.
Just from the neighbors from the back, it might feel somewhat imposing, so if you've had some sensitivity to that?
We do. And I just think it creates too many stairs for, for the occupant.
Okay.
So it's really a marketing decision as well.
Okay, and a piece standard, like kind of peaked roof, kind of?
Yeah, we, we, we had an elevation at, at the last meeting, and we think it, it fits very well into the typical buildings in, in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Colonial-style construction.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the board?
Just to, so these are, because I didn't remember that. So it is two, two spaces per garage?
There'll be, there'll be single-car garages.
Single-car garages.
But the second space will be...
To the...
In, in, on the site, yeah.
Okay. Because that, that is a concern I have. I think it's really a planning concern, more than ours, but the, you know, the, moving everything back is great, and I know there's, there is going to be landscaping and vegetation retained, but I'm just thinking about the folks at, you know, 44th Main Street, who are going to have headlights pointed at them, potentially. So just something to keep in, keep in mind. I, I think that's probably addressed in planning and with landscaping and, and buffering, but, and I, and I think it's overall improved with the new driveway layout, too. So, but just something to keep in mind and maybe, maybe think about conditions.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Baum. Any other questions for the applicant? You'll have an opportunity after the public to speak to us again.
I just have a quick question, sorry. With the move of the driveway to the other side, I'm trying to recall from the prior iteration, if, if the buildings that were originally to, that are more towards the school size, are they equally as close to the property line as they were in the last iteration, or, or have they kind of scooted over towards?
Looks like the two buildings to the right are pretty much where they are now.
Okay.
The, yeah, under the new plan, the buildings do get a little bit closer to the, to the school.
Okay. So is it, did it say 15 and 20 feet was the difference on that? It's like a...
This shows the 15-foot setback.
Okay.
On the current plan that we're outside of. On the prior plan, here's the 15-foot setback here, but then there was the room for the driveway.
Okay.
So there was another probably 15 feet beyond the setback, 30, 40 feet to those buildings.
Okay, thank you.
We changed the driveway because we believe there's, you know, better sight. And there's a, there's some queuing that goes, that happens in, in the school pickup and drop-off, but it, it usually doesn't queue as far back as that driveway. If it does, it's for a very, very short period of time, like...
I think it's much better.
Yeah.
Than before, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll open this up to the public. If any members of the public would like to comment on this application, this is a good opportunity to do so.
I'm Paul Markie. Behind the property.
I'm sorry, you, what is your address, Mr. Markie?
Ten Ash. Thank you. Right behind the property. Few things. Respectfully request the board to review that, that lot is a corner lot by your definition of the zoning ordinance. For a lot, corner, a lot abutting upon two or more streets at their intersection or upon two parts of the same street forming an interior angle of less than 135 degrees, which that does, it's like 134 degrees from my Chinese protractor. Respectfully request the board to review the setback on that because that's going to become a blind corner with the building so close. Speaking of queuing for the schools, this morning's where I can't get out of my street because people queue in the line, they block the street in the morning and the afternoon, the same thing, too. Respect for property values. House next to me is on the market for 1.18 million. So, and I think it's pending. So a single-family home
I'm sorry to snicker, but just prices an extra, just, I just can't.
Taxes an extra, or
I just can't believe it.
Yeah, those are the two things I got. Just respectfully request a review of the, whether that is a corner lot by your definition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Markie.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Dave Essenza, 44 Main Street.
Good evening.
And, you know, while we're here tonight, just like anyone else would, we want what's best for our neighborhood. And we think that staying with the ordinance that was probably enacted by this board back in 1960 would be the best way to go instead of doubling the, the amount of homes on the property. So anyhow, I went through all the, the five criterion and I tried to address each one, what concerns I might have. Can I ask a question of the attorney?
Well, you can ask us.
Okay. He said, he used the term going concern. I didn't know what he meant by that.
What was the context?
I think it was something to do with the, the property and I'm guessing it was dealing with the, he's going to do some excavating. Is that, do you remember?
Well, why don't you continue and he'll address that in his remarks afterwards.
Yeah, number one. Variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The proposal alters the essential character of the neighborhood. We feel that the four units on that lot would give it, make it look like a compound, like if you look at the place across from the Extramar, like there's nine units stuffed in there. It's like, like a regular compound, which would be, wouldn't look like our neighborhood, our residential neighborhood. Number two. Spirit of the ordinance is, is observed with public interest. And he always talks about, in his narrative, he talks about the housing shortage. And just looking through my neighborhood, up the street, up the, there's a Ray Farm development, there's 96 units there they put in since 2019. There's units down at, at the end of Portsmouth Ave and there's other ones that have been putting in. I just wonder, a housing shortage, how do we know there is a housing shortage and how do we know when we don't have a housing shortage? Is there some kind of formula? Or is that like a planning board thing? And I know they're actually in the works of planning Phase Four over there at Ray Farm. So there's going to be some more. Right now, there's three available, three available units. Number three. Substantial justice. Is substantial justice done? He says the project is not financially viable if four units are not approved. We just talked about how much the house next door went for. And I don't know how you would figure that out. How much, again, this would be a question for him, is how much are you paying for the property? How do we know how much? Are you going to make money, are you going to lose money? You can't, I can't answer that without, without knowing that. And he said the criterion was, was met the last time, but we didn't take a vote. Number four.
We did take a vote last time. And the results of the vote were that the motion was denied to permit a density of five units for failure to meet criteria 1, 2, and 5A, which means that it did meet the other, the application submitted then did meet the other criteria. A vote was certainly taken.
It says here in his narrative that it wasn't.
Well, a vote was taken because I have the minutes of the last meeting and I voted on it, as did the two members to my right, the two members to my left. I just wanted to clarify that while you're here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
The, the value of the surrounding properties is not diminished. I'm talking about our values, our neighborhood values, what's valuable to us, our values to us. We love Steve, Steve's a neighbor. He's a great neighbor, great guy. We would not want to lose. And
I'm sorry, who are you referring to?
Steve David Chin, David Gin, the owner of the property, 406, yeah. And I get consensus in the neighborhood. It's a very quiet neighborhood. After 5:00, there's no noise coming out of that property, very peaceful. Now, now you have four, four units, four families coming and going for who knows how long, what time of night and whatever, certainly would be too much noise or more noise. Of course, the best thing would be if Steve would fix the property up. He's a good, good neighbor, but not a very good steward of his environment, shall we? So we, you know, the best thing would be to live with the current ordinance. Number five. The literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because of special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Well, there's nothing we can do about the shape of the property. You have to comply with what the rules are. He says that the size and location make it poorly suited for a single or duplex. But isn't that what they're asking to put, put in there? Four single-family homes?
Well, what he's saying is that it's not appropriate for us, it's
Just one?
He's just making a distinction between one unit or two units, which are allowed without a variance, as opposed to the four, which require the variance that we're citing on this evening.
And earlier, the lawyer, I forget his name, he cited four rental properties, 64 and 68, Anna Butters, and they may even be in the resident, the commercial zone. You guys would know better than I would about that. So I don't know if that really has anything to do with the property we're talking about. And Section 5B says, "The board concluded at the November hearing that the five-unit proposal was reasonable." Did you guys propose that that was reasonable?
Yes.
Five units? You did?
Okay.
And in that section, he again talks about the housing shortage. I already, I already talked about that, but that's what I got.
Thank you very much, Mr. Essenza. Not for you, but I think you've probably got some answers from the, from the applicant.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public like to ask a question or?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Audrey Hoyt. I own 43 Main Street and I think
Audrey, how do you spell your last name, please?
H-O-Y-T.
H?
O-Y-T.
And you're at 43 Main?
E, I don't live there. It's a multifamily I own.
One of them.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I think this is great. That dilapidated car garage has been falling apart since we bought the property 10 years ago. Like it was bad then and it's even worse like now. I'm just glad the driveway isn't still going directly into my house right there because it is a really narrow lot and there's no parking space in the back. But other than that, I don't have any complaints.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the board?
So some of this might be a little redundant at this point.
If you could introduce yourself.
I'm Anne. Yeah. Anne Essenza, 44 Main Street, David's wife. I'll probably do a little bit more of the emotional part of all of this. We've lived here for 36 years. Our house, everybody keeps calling it an apartment complex. We have the main house. It's three stories, 10 rooms. It's our single-family home and there's a wing on the back that has two of the tiniest little apartments you've ever seen. One's a studio. But the neighborhood is, has the characteristic and the building styles are all originally single-family homes. And even though some of them do have apartments in them, like ours, they still give the character of the neighborhood is single, old, single-family homes, fairly large. And that's why it's a residential, residentially zoned. It's not commercially zoned. The units, I think my husband mentioned them down the street across from Extramar, that's commercially zoned. So there's a big difference between residential and commercial. I'm sure Pat's, Mr. Houghton's, units are going to be beautiful. That's not the issue. There's going to be two buildings on one piece of property, each unit on that, so the four units are large units. I know our apartments, we have the single-family house with two tiny little apartments. Most of the other houses have tiny little apartments. These are four huge units in comparison to the size in the neighborhood. When we bought the house, I think I said this last time, I was concerned because of the gas station. It's grandfathered, grandfathered in, so we were told you can't do anything about that, but because of the, the zoning being residential, nothing bigger could ever go in. This is much bigger. Yes, it's going to not be the mess that it is, but anything that comes in is going to be much better than what's there now. Or Steve can upgrade and fix things up, which we would like personally, but I just, my big concern is it's a residential neighborhood and I feel like four townhouse condo units is going to change the whole look and feel of the neighborhood. So that's my concerns.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Hearing none will close the public session and ask the applicant or his attorney counsel to address some of the issues that were raised. Mr. Arnold.
Thank you. So I just wanted to touch on a few things and if I don't cover something the board's interested in, let me know and I'll address it. On the driveway and the location of the driveway, the traffic backup, I just wanted to point out that driveway can't be really physically any further than where we're putting it from the school and where the congestion is. And we're eliminating kind of a wide-open curb cut that's there for the repair facility now with two separate kind of distinct entrances. So I think it's a dramatic improvement and really can't get any better than what we're showing here. And as I mentioned, that just the traffic volume itself is going to be about half of what's going in and out there with the existing business. Question about what I meant by a going concern. I think my comment in my initial presentation was just saying that there's an existing building here. There's an existing business. The business is a going concern. And that provides and generates value for this property such that it eventually drives up the price of the property and makes it less feasible for other development to go in here. If it were a vacant property, if the business wasn't viable, then the seller would have more incentive to lower the price and a new development would be more feasible. A couple of comments just on the character of the neighborhood. I just wanted to make two points there, both slightly different. The first is that the use that we're proposing here, I think, is dramatically more consistent with the neighborhood than what is there today. It's a residential use as opposed to a non-conforming, commercial use. The board has granted a variance to allow multifamily, so the use itself is allowed there. The question is really, you know, three units versus four units if multifamily's allowed and we're looking to add, you know, a fourth unit. I understand and respect the comment about, you know, there are a lot of older, single-family homes in this neighborhood that may have been converted over the years or may have apartments that are part of them. I think that that really goes to an aesthetic or design issue when you're comparing how these buildings will look compared to how the older, single-family homes look in the area. I don't think that distinction is relevant for purposes of the density issue because the design of the building, the architecture of the building, it's debatable whether that is different than what's already out there. And quite frankly, that's a planning and design issue. It's not an issue of will the increased density change the character of the neighborhood? The issue with the variance request is will the density change the character of the neighborhood? And I'd say that, given the examples, I don't want to reiterate them all, of all the multifamily properties out there that have more density than what we're proposing, I don't think that it will. And I would just note that the 44 Main Street property is a property that's two tenths of an acre with three units, which means there's 3,000 square feet of land area per unit, less than half of what we're proposing here.
Clarification, if I may. You cite in your application four different locations, 64 Main Street, 68 Main Street, 44 and 41. Are all of those in the same zoning district as the, as your application?
I don't remember the, we had one, I had cited one in the first application, this maybe three properties away, but not in our zoning district. I don't remember the number, the address off the top of my head, but I think we pulled that comparison out of this application. Do you remember the addresses, Doug? Because I remember you were the one who pointed out one of our examples was zoned commercial.
I think it was 69 because it's on
The other side of the street, up a few properties.
Which is in a commercial.
So all of the other ones, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the, the numbers off the top of my head.
That's fine. 64 and 68 Main Street and 44, obviously, and 41 Main Street are all within the same zoning district.
I believe they are. Yeah, I think we pulled out that last, that last one that was in commercial.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any further questions for the applicant before we close the public session? Okay. We're going into deliberations then. So what we have is an application that we have agreed is significantly different enough from the prior application so that we can consider it. And I don't think I need to refresh everybody's memory that we did move to approve two of the three variance requests last time. And this is a modification strictly of the third. And we did say that the prior application, I was a mess during it, the previous application missed on three criteria, 1, 2, and 5A, which means that we felt that it passed on 3 and 4 and 5B, although 5A and B obviously are intertwined. So what we're really looking at is, is quite limited here. With that as a preamble, would anybody like to walk us through the criteria or does anybody have any comments or questions to start us off? I've got a heavy side on my left.
You're allowed.
I actually had a
The I over here, that's why you get the side.
I actually had a question.
Please.
So
So one of the, some, one of the members of the public brought up the fact that that lot is a corner lot, and that the setbacks may be different. And I just wanted it to kind of look at that, if that, is that the case? And, and I've been going through the Bible here, and I'm not seeing anything that differentiates a corner lot.
I'm not sure it makes a difference for this application, because we've already granted setback relief. This is just getting to density.
Okay.
So the fact that whether it's a corner lot or not, and I think, you know, that would be ultimately Doug's, I think Doug's determination, but what, for the purpose of tonight, whether it's a corner lot or not, doesn't really impact the variance request that's before us.
Got it.
Because it's really just density.
So at the prior meeting, I think the corner lot conversation was focused on, specifically on the setback.
Yes.
Okay.
Is not what we're considering today.
Yep. And I'm not seeing it in the, I'm sure it's in the minutes somewhere, I'm just not finding it.
But it's good that we clarified that.
It's good that we clarified it.
Because it was a question.
So this is strictly density this evening. Would somebody like to walk us through the criteria? Please.
Okay, I'd be happy to.
I sense the word "happy" you had to be dragged out of you slightly this day.
Not at all, Bob. Okay, so variance criteria. First criteria is that the variance is not contrary to the public interest. So, and that's tied to number two, which is the spirit of the ordinance is observed, and the explanation is that the proposed use must not conflict with the explicit or implicit purpose of the ordinance, and must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure public rights. So this is an R2 district. It does allow single-family and two-family use by right, but it is a state route, I believe, and a part of the downtown area, and it does have quite a few multifamilies in the existing neighborhood, and some commercial uses as well. So to my mind, I feel that two buildings that will not be one massive structure, that will, you know, I think maybe even appear almost like separate properties in terms of their size and their placement, will not change the essential character of the neighborhood, but certainly open to any opinions on that.
No, I agree. I think, given the size of the lot, again, getting to density, the, you know, four units on this lot compared to the other, you know, much smaller size surrounding lots, I think there's consistency there. I, I do acknowledge that, you know, one of the comments about, you know, the, most of the other multifamilies are converted, and this is going to be a different aesthetic potentially, but I don't think that's before us tonight with the question of density. I would, I'd love to see those really, the design really be thoughtfully, you know, laid out to fit in. But I think for the purposes of the question of density, I don't think there's any impact on, negative impact on the character of the neighborhood, health, safety, or welfare. And certainly to that extent, that the relocation of the driveway, I think, is a distinct and significant improvement.
I would totally agree with that.
As is the moving forward of the properties off of the rear line to allow more space for not only small removal, but for buffering vegetation, or fencing of some sort from the adjoining properties.
Okay, and we are returning to a residential use from a commercial, you know, fairly high-impact commercial use-
Yep.
-within the residential district, which is a reduction in the nonconformity of the property. So I think that's a benefit. So, criteria three, substantial justice is done. The benefit to the applicant should not be outweighed by harm to the general public or other individuals. I think that this property has been in serious need of redevelopment for a long time, and that its redevelopment is a benefit to the applicant, but also a benefit to the neighborhood and to the overall area. And I don't see, I know change is not always what everybody wants, but I don't see any harm to the general public. That it is a reduction in the nonconformity of the, the use of the property. So that's my opinion on substantial justice. Any discussion? Okay. So the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. There was no expert testimony on this, but as a valuation expert, I would suggest that this investment in this return to a residential use will enhance property values in the area to some extent, rather than cause any harm to them. And then item five, literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. And unnecessary hardship means because of special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, A, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general purpose, public purposes of the ordinance provision, and the specific application of that provision to the property, and the proposed use is a reasonable one. Attorney Arnold did a good job of discussing what does the special, the special conditions of the property that make it unique in that its size, its large amount of frontage, and its configuration make it a challenging property to develop. Its former use as a gas station doesn't really lend itself to a single-family use. There's expense in changing the use from a gas station, and a single-family home would, it would be a fairly high bar, cost-wise, to, to get past. And so I think that those unique factors and the fairly high-traffic location is another reason, single-family is probably not as likely to be the first, the most attractive option to the market. And then the proposed use is a reasonable one. I think that four units, given the reduction in size and scale, is a reasonable use.
And a residential, right. Four residential units.
Four residential, exactly.
Right.
Any further discussion on the-
Comments or discussion? Would you like to just, you're on a roll, so I can make a motion?
Well, Kevin mentioned conditions, so I want to have a bit of a conversation about what he had in mind. If I'm going to make the motion, did you have something in mind, Kevin?
Well, the only thought I had was, and these are always tough, because I, I don't want to insert ourselves into the planning process, but I was considering something along the lines of requiring sufficient, sufficient screening to, you know, to reduce impacts from, you know, from headlights, from headlights from the parking area, you know, at the determination, you know, as, as determined by the planning board, or something like that. I think they're going to address it no matter what, but, so the condition would really, more than anything, just be a flag for them of, of our concerns on the issue.
And you made a good point as to the direction of headlights as you pull into those parking spaces to the rear. So I thought that might be where you were going, so, okay?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So yes, I guess I could make a motion.
Thank you.
Okay, I move that the application for variance from Article 4, Section 4.3, Schedule 2, to exceed the density requirements to permit four units on a 26,000-square-foot lot, where a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet is required for each single-family dwelling, and 24,000 square feet is required for each duplex. Subject property is located at 46 Main Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 63-1, ZBA Case 24-1. I move that we approve the application for four units, for relief from density for four units, with the condition that upon planning board review, special attention is paid to screening from abutters, particularly in the sightline of the six, eight parking spaces, is it? I forgot.
I would say the property of 44 Main Street.
Okay, so.
Do I have the right number?
Yes.
Well, I think tying it to parking makes sense, because if parking moves for some reason, we'll want to tie-
Right.
-screening.
Good.
Okay, so the, the six spaces at the rear of the parcel.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, a discussion of the motion. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, I just wanted to stop and say the reason I said the five members, it's the same five members who voted last time, which is one of the reasons not to involve the alternates at this stage. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Approved, 5-0. Thank you very much. And we do look forward to seeing that property being improved. Thank you. Right. Next up, the application of David and Emily Gulick. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that?
This is the corner-
The corner lot, probably?
No. This is not a corner lot. Oh.
I don't think it's a corner lot, personally.
Thank you, Mr. Essenza.
Yeah, it came up at the last.
I don't think it is.
Well, that was-
If I may continue. The application of David and Emily Gulick for a variance from Article 5, Section 5.1.2A, for the expansion of a non-conforming use to permit the proposed construction of an addition, which is a garage with living space above, to replace an existing garage which currently encroaches within the required side yard setback, and a variance to exceed the maximum building coverage requirement in the R2 zoning district. Subject property is located at 21 Charter Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 73-101. This is ZBA Case 24-2. Before we move on to the applicant, would either of the alternates like to vote on this case? And is someone else willing to allow them to do that?
I'm happy to abstain from voting.
As am I.
Laura, would you like to vote on this, or?
Yeah, I can vote on it.
Would you?
Sure.
Okay. Two alternates will be voting members. Ms. Page and Ms. Davies will not be voting on this application, but all seven of us can participate in the discussion. I take it, Chair, Mr. Gulick.
I am.
Good evening.
I'm David Gulick. Nice to meet you all.
And you, sir.
Thanks for having me. My wife, who is the other applicant, and we're together, we're planning to live there together with our family. She just happens to be at an orchestra, high school orchestra performance tonight, so that's why she's not here.
We're happy with you.
I'm glad to hear that.
So far.
Would you like me to go ahead and-
I most certainly would. We're all ears, sir.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. So we're requesting a variance for our addition, proposed addition, replacing a non-conforming garage with a new two-story addition, which will encroach on the side yard setback. And I think we also require a variance for exceeding the maximum building coverage limit. As a little background, we bought the property in 2017. We currently live in town. We live at the Phillips Exeter Academy campus, and our housing there, we knew was going to come to an end. We weren't sure exactly when we were going to move off campus, but we have to be off campus by June of next year. And in the intermediate time, my wife and I, we have two daughters, both of teenage years. My sister passed away in North Carolina. Her daughter joined our family, and we're now legal guardians for her, and happily so. But we are a family of five now. And so in terms of us moving there, and our intention is to do so, we're not intending, yeah, our intention is to move there. That's what the purpose of this is from our standpoint. And we have two bedrooms at the residence rate now. This would enable us to have a third bedroom, and puts it in a place where it feels like this could be our house.
Is the property currently occupied, rented?
The property had been rented through December of this past year, so it's now a month and a half without occupants.
It's vacant, right now.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And just so I, it looks pretty, looks like it from the drawings, but, so this is going to be garage with another bedroom on top of the-
So garage, bedroom directly on top, you'll see that it connects over, that bedroom would connect over to the existing house on the second floor. And the location of the front of the garage and bedroom push forward towards the front of the house enough to enable that connection. What should I say? So where the current garage is, is also in that, in the lot's top-down view. And we tried to match that layout, the footprint, as much as seems possible.
So that was a question. One of the difficulties is that the construction drawings are, are really helpful, but what we don't have is an overview that shows where everything is relative to the side setbacks. It appears that the existing garage is right on your property line. Is that accurate?
It's setback two feet, five inches.
Okay.
I'm looking at-
If you go to A-O dot one, which is-
Did I miss the-
Double-sided.
Okay.
Does that show the property boundaries?
Okay, I apologize, and I just missed it. That's great.
It's on the, it's on the backside, they're double-sided.
And I think that the roofing, unfortunately, on this drawing, makes it a little bit harder to see exactly where the existing garage is, but you should see the existing garage cross-hatched within there.
Okay.
And so it's currently at two, two feet, five inches from the, the property line. And with us straightening out this so that the addition will be parallel to the house, it ends up with two feet, three inches proposed distance from the side. Did, Mr. Baum, was that, did I?
No, that's helpful. And actually, I apologize, because I had just missed this drawing, which would have answered all of my questions, so. But that is helpful. So it looks like it is, it is going to extend out, well, you said, so two, so the, actually, just to clarify, so it looks from the drawing, though, that it, the wall will be two feet, three inches, but it looks like the, the roof overhang does extend a little farther.
Correct, as, as does the roof overhang for the current garage, I believe.
And if I missed this, do you know the, the height of the existing garage versus-
That did not end up on here, but I spoke with Curtis, who did the drawings for us. And two heights that I think are helpful to you, the center, and I'm not going to get the correct names, but the center- the correct names, but the center ridge line of it is 20 feet high.
The new, the peak.
The peak is 20 feet.
Of the existing.
The proposed peak is 20 feet.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And we're trying to keep the overall size of this so that it doesn't feel so large, which we feel like the main house should still feel like the main house, and also are very aware that we're building this right next to neighbors that we care for. And so the center peak is 20 feet high. It slants down, and on the side facing the next lot over, it's 18 feet.
So the connector is on the second floor only?
Correct.
And the reason for that is to allow passage into the backyard of some sort?
So connection over into the main house on the first floor would take a space that's a really usable room with a window, and you'd end up making this attachment to there. There's a set of stairs on that side of the house as well, like that is where the stairs are.
So it's an interior constraint, not?
Correct. Correct. And the, where you see the connector going over on the second floor, the reason for the location of that is that that's where the upstairs hallway is located. So there's stairs that go upward to that location, and there's like a landing.
Eight, one, two illustrates that.
Oh, okay, great.
And then between your neighbor on the garage side and the garage, it looks like there's six-foot privacy fence in place there now.
Correct. Correct, there is. And that privacy fence extends as far forward as where the new, the proposed garage would go.
So I understood, several of us did a drive-by, and we're kind of squinting down from the parking lot across the street, and it is a little cockeyed. So I understand straightening it out, but you're straightening it by pivoting it toward the fence rather than away from the fence. And so my concern strictly has to do with runoff from the roof line, and whether you think that's going to be imposing on the neighbor at all. Because you are getting a little, I mean, it's trivial, but you are getting a little closer.
I understand what you're saying.
And the structure's getting much larger, so that rain and snow coming off the roof will, you won't have to plow.
Duly noted, I, right.
It's going over there, right? I don't, I mean.
I understand your concern.
I'm just curious about.
Yeah, I'd love to take that back, that comment back to Curtis Boyden, who's helping us with this in terms of thinking about that, the roof line and how the runoff is handled.
Okay. I mean, you're trivially getting closer, but you are getting a little bit closer.
I understand.
To the line, yeah.
Do you know if the new construction you're doing, the overhang, because yours, this is the diagram of the walls, right?
The dashed line is the wall.
Is the wall.
The heavy line.
The heavy line. But this doesn't, this diagram doesn't include where the overhang will eventually lie?
Yeah, it's the hat. That's where the overhang goes to, and that's the wall, the darker line.
Okay. And so the overhangs are going to stay the same distance, or are they going to get closer and farther out towards the fence as well?
So the overhang is going to remain the same distance that the overhang of the current garage is.
Okay.
And it's not designated here, but on a 2.1, I'm not sure if that helps, the, the overhang of the current garage is, is shown, and I think we're trying to keep it to that equivalent.
Got the lower dash.
There's a little, a little lower dashed bit there.
That's the same. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other, I mean, we've kind of interrupted you. Did you want to?
I appreciated that, actually. It was better to be in a conversation, as you know.
Is there anything else that you'd like to cover?
So I, I think that, I think you're looking at an increase of the lot coverage from 30, just over, it was like 30.4% to 33.4%. So we're looking at an addition of 130 square feet. And is there anything else that should be included here, including here?
I don't think so. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
So we're, we're talking about runoff along the property line. Can we make any, like, requests for gutters or provision for stormwater?
I think a gutter's a really good idea, and I don't know whether you'd want to have one on both, both sides or not, but I think, and nor do I recall whether the existing house has gutters.
The existing house does not, and the garage does not. I know that I've already been speaking with our architect, and when I was speaking to him about the water runoff towards the small space that's between our house and the garage, he was already speaking about gutters. So.
I think that's a good mention.
Just that it be provided, the runoff, additional runoff be provided for us somehow, and then we'll leave it to Doug to make sure we're, we're doing it.
It makes sense.
Doing it right. Okay. So, sound good?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Anything else? Thank you. Have a seat for a sec. Would the member of the public like to say anything?
Good presentation.
You're here for the next application, is kind of what I thought. Okay. Would you like to rebut that?
Thank you.
Well done. With that, I, and if there are no further questions for the applicant, we'll close the, close the public session and move into deliberations. So again, I invite all seven members of the board, or six plus me, to participate in the discussion, but any motions and voting has to come from the five voting members. Any questions?
I think it sounds like a nice plan.
I think it's.
Yeah. And I noticed none of the neighbors are here.
Are here.
Shut up.
No pitchforks.
Right, right.
When you walk in and don't recognize anybody, it's a good thing.
It's a good sign. It's a very good sign. Would somebody, I mean, we have, do we have two separate variances here?
Yes.
We do. So the first will be expansion of a non-conforming use to permit the proposed construction of an addition to replace an existing garage which encroaches within the required side yard setback. So would somebody like to, I don't think we need to go through the variance criteria, given the tenor of the discussions, but we will, I will ask someone to make a motion, or if somebody has a question about any of the variance criteria for the first variance request, I'd be happy to hear that.
So Bobby, you brought up the, the topic of the fact that the adjustment to straighten it, to straighten the building, it actually then encroached, it got closer to the lot line as opposed to straightening it.
By, I think, two inches, I think.
I know, I know it's a trivial amount, but is that something that we want to, and the applicant did say, you know, that, you know, he'd be willing to bring that back. Is that something that we want to put in as, as a condition? I know it's only a couple inches, but it, I don't know, you know, it's, there's still the precedent that that sets, when it could just be pivoted the other direction and you wouldn't.
Well, I guess that maybe you can't pivot the other way because then you're too close to the existing house. We don't know why they pivoted it that way, so I don't want to put a condition saying you have to pivot it the other way, and then they get there and it makes it harder to connect to the house or the.
The application, the applicant did not indicate that there was any specific rationale for it, so it might have been something to do with the designer simply wanting to pivot, wanted to get a little more room. I don't, it doesn't appear that there's a problem there, but one of the elevations did show where the, be coming in anyway.
I just don't want to put him in a spot where it makes it.
Well, my guess is that it pivoted just to have everything line up with the existing house, just from a design standpoint.
I think it's worthwhile making a motion, making a, a condition that we would appreciate it if it can be pivoted so that it remains 2.5, two, two feet, five inches away from, rather than getting closer to the property line. I think that's an appropriate thing to add, if you're, if you're looking for a condition to add.
I would be worried, Bob, that that would just confuse.
Confuse things?
Things, if, because that's the relief that's being granted.
Okay.
So it would kind of under, it would conflict with the relief granted, if, if granted.
I think it might be harder to build a building.
Closer?
That's not, you know, that's skewed.
Oh, no, no, I want to, I, I fully agree with keeping it parallel to the existing building. The question is whether it's two inches to the left or two inches to the right.
Oh, I see, okay.
On the map, are we pivoting from, you know, a street-side right corner, or are we pivoting on the, you know, back left corner?
Correct.
And so one of the corners is already where it is, right? So like, the existing structure is already two feet, five, and if that's the one we're pivoting on, we're just bringing it back two inches over. I guess if there was a problem, that front corner would already be causing the problem, right? Because everything else is just going to run off that front corner where it already is. Does that make sense? Might not make any sense.
Yeah, you're pivoting on one of the four corners.
Yeah.
Right.
And so if there was like a problem, like by moving it there, it's not going to cause more water or something, that corner would already be causing the problem because it's not moving. Right.
This is what we're talking about.
We're talking about.
I know. I mean.
It is, it's this much.
I kind of feel that.
The width of our glasses.
Yeah. I sort of feel the applicant has heard us and is very well aware of how we feel about the way it was pivoted, so he will probably go back and discuss with his planner if it can pivot the other way. I just, putting a condition there, I think, is just a little weird.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would someone like to make a motion? Ms. Montagno, did you wish to make a motion?
Yeah, oh, I, I want to ask, yeah, I will be having to make a motion, but I want to, did we want to, we talked about. Gutters, or provisions for addressing any additional runoff that may occur as a result of the construction. Do we want to put that in as a condition?
I don't wish to put in a condition that would require them to have gutters, but I think that, again, we seem to have a willing applicant who, I believe, has heard us loud and clear.
Got it. Straightforward then. I see notes being taken.
Just doing homework.
Okay. So I move that the application of David and Emily Gulick for a variance from Article 5, Section 5 dot 1 dot 2a, for the expansion of a non-conforming use to permit the proposed construction of an additional, of an addition garage with living space above to replace an existing garage which currently encroaches within the required side yard setback.
Stop there.
Stopping there.
Be approved.
Be approved.
Got to say that.
Yes, be approved.
Be approved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. So first variance is approved 5-0. The second variance is to exceed the maximum building coverage requirement in the R2 zoning district. And we have a calculation in the application, do we not?
Mm-hmm.
Which is from.
I believe it's an increase of 3.1% or 133 square feet.
3.1%, correct. And what, what did you work it out to be?
133 square feet.
133 square feet and 3.1% is the specific relief point it's on. Any discussion of the second variance request? Hearing none. Would you like to continue?
I didn't take that, we'll let him do it, since he wrote up percentages.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. One second, I put away the sheet that had the.
See, you not only got to voting on your first meeting, I got you making motions.
Well, I haven't done it yet, so.
Can you read that?
And it has the second digit, so.
Is that, I just wanted to be able to say.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, don't want to confuse you. Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the requested variance from Article 5, Section 5.1.2a, two, to exceed the maximum building coverage requirement in the R2 zoning district. Be approved?
I think you said, I think you started with approved and ended with approved, yeah. We only need one approved.
No, I moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You got them both, 5-0. Have fun. Thank you. All right. And for your patience.
Public speaker. Just kidding.
So, final piece of new business. I'm going to butcher this, but I'll do my best. The application of Rachel Trevelzi.
You got it perfect.
Wow.
For a special exception for Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule I, and Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit an accessory dwelling unit to be created within the existing single-family residence located at 12 Highland Street. Subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. This is Tax Map Parcel 65-138, and ZBA Case 24-3. Ms. Trevelzi?
Do you want to confirm who's voting on this one?
I think that's a really good idea. What are we, what are we thinking here on this one?
I can go back to being alternate.
Yep, I can. I had a good time.
You're done? You're good?
He's exhausted.
All right, good, we're good. The five regular members will be voting on this application. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Trevelzi, and I live at this property. And basically, the overall request is to split my house to make a one-part rental. And then, do you have any questions? Do I need, should I go through this? Like, read the?
Let's, let's, let's go through the question, let's see what we've got for questions, because I know there are some.
Okay.
Because I know I have some.
Okay, go ahead.
I was wondering about the floor plan a little bit.
Yes.
What do you know?
Just.
You got at least four of us here that are completely confuzzled by the floor panel.
Since I did it, I'm sure I can clear it all up.
Okay, so.
So the area that is identified as the kitchen, and I'm going to say the front room, even though it's not labeled, where the stairs are, that will remain with the main single-family home unit?
Correct.
Okay. And then the bedroom, bathroom, and garage are going to be the.
The ADU.
The ADU.
Will the garage still be a garage?
No, it will be part of the ADU.
So there'll be no interior parking any longer?
Correct.
Oh, that was, okay.
Okay. That was not clear, because on both, it's still labeled.
Garage.
Well, actually, it isn't on the second one. But the one that shows the ADU still says garage.
Well, that's the second floor. That was a mistake.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's dependent on being approved, then it goes from a garage to part of the ADU.
So it will become finished living space?
Correct.
And are you going to change the garage door?
I have looked at, talked to my construction guy with that, and it will be a garage door that has a door that you can open in it. So yes, it will be changed for the living area.
So like a man door inside?
Yeah.
The garage door?
A man and woman door.
Thank you. I know that they call it that, and I hate that, but that is what they call it.
But yeah.
But yeah.
It's like on, you still have a garage.
But it'll open up into living space.
Correct, yeah.
So the garage door won't actually open anymore, but just a little door will.
This is entirely an issue.
Except in summer, apparently.
No, this is, this is, if you wish to continue on that route, that is your business.
Yeah, we're just trying to understand.
We're trying to understand it. We're not saying, we don't, but the fact of the matter is that if it was remaining a garage in which you could park a car, that cannot be counted toward the accessory dwelling unit.
Gotcha.
Right. It needs to be living space that is, can be lived in as opposed to living in your car lived in.
Correct.
Right.
May I interject really quickly on that, that there will have to be a wall, insulated wall, inside the garage doors if you will want to keep the garage.
Right. You're not going to want to keep the garage door.
For insulation purposes, that exterior wall has to be rated.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, you're not going to keep the garage door, but that's building, that's.
You can leave the garage door, but inside, you have to have a.
To be warmer.
A two-by-six, well, yes.
Okay.
And you want windows, and it don't. And you want windows in the door.
Yeah.
It may be, unless you flip it back, but it may be cheaper to do, sell the doors for X amount of dollars, put them on some website, sell them, and because they are valuable.
Okay.
And that will pay for the cost of building the wall.
Sounds good.
That's probably good. We'll discuss it.
Right. That's a, that's a separate issue. The fact of the matter is that we need to verify that in fact, what is currently the garage will become living space.
Confirmed.
Confirmed.
And then you mentioned.
Because right now, there's no kitchen.
A kitchenette is planned for right by the door that goes from the garage into the, that hallway. And I'm actually, the ADU is actually the unit that I would be living in, because I'm one person. And that's what I'm planning for my living space. And the, the kitchen, the living room, that's already there with the second floor, would be the rental.
So you have to live in one or the other unit? So that's fine, whatever.
Okay, good.
But just someone, that, the owner has to be in one or the other unit?
I'm in the ADU.
Okay, that's great. So you're saying that the, you said something about an existing sink, and that's that area that looks like sort of hallway?
Ooh, not existing. I'm saying I have it planned for by the door in the garage, per approval of the ADU. Because then that, that'll be the kitchenette with fridge, stove, sink.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, those are just my questions.
I believe the application mentioned there'd be no changes to the exterior. But if we're taking down a garage door and putting up a wall, that's a, isn't that a change to the exterior?
There's no changes to the footprint of the exterior.
Correct.
Okay.
No, the appearance will change if the garage doors leave. And you also mentioned that there would be no construction. And there definitely sounds like there will be construction, but.
Oh, I didn't realize, I didn't realize I said no construction.
But.
Well, I think it was consistent with what you had, I mean, I think what you had said was there'd be no exterior change, which until five minutes ago, I think was your plan, but won't be feasible.
Unless I could insulate the garage door, which wouldn't make sense, because you can't open it in the winter.
Regardless, the changes are not substantial, so I'm not saying it's a problem, just clarifying.
Well, there's no restriction, right? It just has to be.
Right.
Just has to still look like a single-family home, which this will.
Absolutely.
So the, the figure in the application for the square footage of the living area is 8,000, or 1,890 square feet? Is that presently, or with, assuming that the, the garage is, becomes finished?
That would be, that's the one that is the two-bedroom upstairs and the kitchen and living room.
Okay.
The ADU is, I think it's a total of 900 square feet.
Okay.
I don't think that's what Teresa was asking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no, it is, because I'm, I'm thinking about the, the square footage limitations for an ADU.
Yeah, I thought you said the 1,800 square feet. That's like the.
The 1,890 of living area does not include what is currently the garage.
Correct. That's correct, but I think you're saying 1,800, that's going to include, like, that's the house.
No, I'm reading your application. It says, "The single-family home situated on the property contains approximately 1,890 square feet of living area."
Correct, that's not the garage.
Including an unfinished basement. It's not including the garage.
And then, when, if you approve the ADU, the ADU will include the garage with the.
So it's actually going to go up in size.
Okay. And then, is the unfinished business, unfinished basement space included in the 1,890 square feet?
No.
Okay.
It's just storage.
Well, it says including.
It says it is, it says it is including an unfinished basement.
I think that might be.
Including, like, it's down there, but it's not part of the living space.
So you took this information from your tax card, I'm assuming?
Yes, I had my, I had, I asked.
So they would not include the basement?
It does not.
I'm just trying to make sure.
If it's unfinished, right?
Right, so.
Yeah, it doesn't include.
I think it's just a phrasing.
Okay.
That was also, yeah, that's what I.
Doug, have you, have you looked at?
Doug knows all about my house.
Yeah. Yes. I mean, you know, we're, I think we're, we're, we're going on the, what, the presentation, the applicant, and, and sort of relying on Doug as well, that, that those specific ADU dimensional criteria are met, at least I am, because.
Well, and I also did have the attorneys at the DTC lawyers, like, they prepared the.
Yeah, yeah. It's just hard to tell that, yeah, it's hard to tell with the, the floor plan, but I'm, I'm confident that.
Okay.
Yeah.
You've not sought specific relief for parking, and you are eliminating the indoor parking, which means that the requirement would be that you would have four parking spaces on the property.
Please refer to picture with cars. That's my neighbor's house, actually.
That's your neighbor's house, not yours.
But it shows you that I have the same, we have the same house. It shows you that four cars are, can, are, you can, piggy, say, say again?
Okay.
Piggybacked in the driveway, off-street parking.
So the two houses are just mirror images of each other?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's a shared driveway with the neighbor, right?
Correct.
Am I remembering that correctly?
I do the snow removal, though.
Will you approve this? I don't remember.
I vaguely remember it, yeah.
Oh, you approved the original construction in 2016?
The, the subdivision, yeah, the, yeah, not the subdivision, but the.
It used to be part of a farm.
The frontage, I guess.
Yeah, with part of a farm.
Okay. Any further questions for the applicant?
So, I'm just concerned about what I just heard about the shared drive. I just need a little more clarity.
Sure.
Where everything is.
So the shared driveway is 65 feet. If you look at the, the picture that has, like, the, I think there's one that has kind of a close-up of the.
This is a two-story garage.
Well, just this, I think this is the tax one.
It's the tax one.
So there's 65 feet that go from the street up to where we split.
Okay.
And then that's shared. Then when we split, I actually have, and she actually has, you could actually fit six cars.
Okay.
For each driveway.
All right, just want to make sure.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Do you have a, but it does, do you have a driveway agreement or anything with your neighbor that lays out?
It says 20 feet.
The use, who maintains it?
Obviously not, obviously not, if I pay for it, there's no removal.
There may be something in the deed of shared.
Yeah.
Language.
Yeah, it's whatever the.
I want to say the utility, there is a utility, utility piece, you know, for the water seer, and let me grab electrical and stuff like that.
I'm willing to bet there's a, yeah.
Oh, it must be something.
There's something, whether it addresses who maintains it, and, I mean, I guess I am a little nervous about adding the additional use, but it's, you know, ADUs are permitted by special exceptions, so it's certainly something that could, could occur.
And also, the truth of the matter is, I'm not, I'm not making more bedrooms, I'm not increasing the size of the house. I used to live there with my ex-husband and my family. They're gone. So I'm not, I'm not, like, increasing the number of people that are going to be there.
Yeah.
It's going to be the people that were originally in the house, just, you know, like, adding.
Yeah, that's a very, very fair point.
Okay. Obviously, there's no one here from the public to comment, so I'm going to close public session. Thank you very much.
Great.
Your all set? We have a special exception. Does somebody want to have an issue on any of the special exception criteria on this application?
I forgot. Am I voting this one or not?
Yes.
Yes, we're back to the.
Back to the original five.
Back to the five.
Thank you.
Back to the original five.
I just found the application rather confusing, and it kind of scares me, because it was hard for me to follow. Like, there were no changes, there are changes.
Right.
It was unclear on what exactly was going to happen, and there seems to be, it's still pretty fresh in the planning stage.
Because of that, I think we need to just be really, I'm sorry.
No.
You're the chair.
No, 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 go ahead.
I just think we need to be really clear about whatever motions we make, more so than a typical, because the application was a little ambiguous.
Well, I think we're okay, because we are still, I mean, we are granting this based on the application and the presentation. So if for some reason, the applicant has erred, I don't think it'd be on purpose, but I think there is some, there are some unexpected changes with the garage, and those criteria aren't met, I, I mean, I don't think they can go forward. I mean, my, I, I, I understand the concern. I think, for me, the concern really gets to, is the 900 feet criteria, those specific ADU criteria. And I think where we would be, if we approve, we'd be approving based on what was presented and the assertions that those are all met. And if for some reason it turns out they're not, then I don't believe the applicant would have the right to move, you know, forward with different, with different dimensions that don't, that don't meet those, that criteria.
I think that there is some ambiguity in the application that we have discussed, and that will be part of the minutes, such as the no construction, when there obviously is going to be some construction. And there will be exterior changes, but there are not going to be increased dimensional changes. And these are things that are, are part of our minutes. So I would say that where the minutes and the application differ, the minutes should take precedence.
So, based on my little napkin calculation here, the original square footage of the living area of the home was 1,890.
90.
90. And the finished garage will add another 440 square feet. So if, that puts us up over, well, basically 2,300 square feet. So if you take 900 feet out of that, there's still plenty of room for, there's still plenty of room for both units anyway, basically, that's.
Even if you count the unfinished basement?
Even, well.
Because the way it was worded is including an unfinished basement in that 2,890, so that's.
But that's not what you meant.
But that's what it says, that's the problem.
Right.
At the point by what this says, but.
The application, to me, reeked a little bit of the lawyers and the applicant having a miscommunication about what was going on. Because like, the, like, it's written here, "The applicant does not propose any modifications to the exterior of the existing dwelling." And like, that was true up until the wall went in.
We got it now.
Which, we went to the code thing, and then saying, like, "The ADU requires no construction." Now, whether or not that applies to the variance that we need to gain, whether or not it requires construction, it just lends doubt, because it's different than what we're hearing.
I think there's a lot of those, like, "Off-street paved gravel parking shall be provided for lease force," like, the ADU has exclusive use of the garage, which, if you're referring to parking, I'd assume the ADU gets to use the garage.
Yeah.
Which, which, well, I had read that the same way.
There's just so much of that, that's.
It is an accurate statement, though.
Right.
Yes, that just makes me heart.
Get your, get your money back.
Laura, what did you say was the square footage that's added for the garage? Did you say?
440 square feet.
How did you get that?
20 by the 22.
Yeah, the back 10 plus the first 12.
Is this dimension? And 22 is that dimension?
If you look at it, it's 20 by 22.
20 by 22, got it.
Okay, so.
So that comes out to 2,330 total finished square feet, which, there's more than enough room for the 900, is it the max, is it the max?
Max is nine, the max and a min, and a minimum.
Right.
So 440 plus.
It's the lesser of.
Yeah, we didn't make that any clearer when we clarified it, did we?
Yeah, so, "The accessory dwelling unit shall be limited to a maximum of 900 square feet, or one-third of the finished floor space of the principal structure, whichever is less, but in no case, less than 750."
What is your count, Laura? 2,390?
2,330, actually.
So that would put us at.
I'm going to use my calculator.
Yeah. My brain is tired.
740 something, 743?
I think it's 770, yeah, one, so I've got 2,330 total square feet, a third of
that would be 776 square feet, so that would be the, the max.
Min, oh.
776.
Would be.
Whatever's less.
Yeah, it's the lesser of.
It's got to be between 750 and 776.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
We don't know exactly what it is.
Well, I think that goes to Esther's comment, is that the drawing is real, it's not to scale, it's not, it doesn't accurately represent what's going to be built there.
I think that the basic floor plan is from the tax card, so she's not, she, it's just a little confusing to.
Well, I think we can get around.
I do, too.
But I, I think, yeah, to the, Esther's point, I, the point that we have to be careful, you know, I think that's right. We can't, I, I think we have to clarify if it's being granted, it's being granted and approved at, you know, consistent with the requirement. So 900, you know, no more than nine, or, I guess the lesser of 900 or one-third of the floor space, and that, because no one's.
One-third of it is 776.
Right, but I don't trust that number.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so that's the 1,890 plus the 440 added on with the garage.
Right.
Yeah, and I can't get, I'm trying to get to that 1,890 based on the measurements on the plan, and I can't get that house being 1,890.
Right, right, but I.
You're going times by two, because it's.
Yeah.
No, because upstairs does not, it's not all the area.
Yeah, and they have the slopes of the roof and stuff, so like, some of these sections are, like, well, they're like, not there, because they're a slanted roof.
Correct.
So it's, like, the, the four corners essentially of the front, above the garage. But I, I totally understand it. It is hard, because we don't have measurements for that.
Right, right. And that's why, I mean, so we can have the applicant come back with accurate measurements, or we can, or, you know, my thought is, can we, can we fashion a motion that would approve it based on that limited number, which puts the onus, I think, on Doug, to make sure that the finished, you know, living space is, you know, is consistent. But I think that, I think that works, and allows this to move, to move forward. And Doug has to confirm that anyway, right? Because we can't, I mean, we can't grant, this isn't a variance, it's a special exception, so we can't grant anything that's inconsistent with the specific ADU requirements. Are people comfortable with that approach?
I'm more comfortable with that than asking the applicant to come back again, and delay this by another month.
Um.
Is the code enforcement officer comfortable with that solution? Absolutely.
Doug, there would be an occupancy permit that would need to be issued ahead of any actual occupancy, so we do have some protection there.
Yep.
Yes.
Mr. Baum, are you comfortable making a motion based on your comments?
Sure.
Good.
I think that's through before I start talking. Yeah, I think I would make a motion to approve the application for special exception per Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule 1, Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit an excessive, accessory dwelling unit to be created within the existing family residence located at 12 Highland Street. I mean, I guess conditioned upon the, the ADU meeting the.
Square foot.
Meeting the square foot requirements, you know, and all other, and all other specific requirements of Section 4.2.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion of the motion. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Me.
Pass 4-1. Okay, you're good. Now, you gotta negotiate with Doug over exactly what the square footage is in different parts of the whole interior of the building. Thank you very much. Right, so, we have, I think, one more piece of business, which is the approval of the minutes of the December 19th, 2023 meeting. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Did anybody spot anything?
I just have, I mean, she's good, but, um, line 371, um, Ms. Page said it's been 30 days. I just happened to re-watch that today and noticed that that was Laura M.
Oh.
If I hadn't been looking at it, it wouldn't have popped out at me, but.
How about that?
But that's the only thing I could, the only Easter egg I could find.
I got one.
And you had to re-watch the meeting?
I did, I had to, I had to watch it to.
I'm not sure that the word ends on line 219 is actually a word. I think it should be hospital with an H.
Two.
I think a Jospital is an interesting sort of thing, but I don't know what one is.
Good, your editing skills.
That looks like, how's it your part-time, you need to find it somewhere else?
That would be short for St. Joseph's Hospital. That's all I found was Jospital. Motion to approve the minutes as amended of the December 19th, 2023 meeting.
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes from the December 19th, 2023 meeting with the adjustment to line 219 and the adjustment to line 371.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded and approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain, since I wasn't there.
Since you weren't there.
Same here.
Okay, four, approve 4-0. Thank you.
Isn't it three zero? Three zero?